Just throw out a trolley net. I was talking to a couple people and they were saying that they're so bad, well, they're eating all the bait. So, so there's no predators at all.
They're closing amberjack season, they're stabbing as well.
I heard that.
And I fully understand overfishing officials, it was in bad shape, you need to fix it.
Hey, you see, you see.
Yeah, yeah.
This is it?
For five?
Five.
Five, nine or back to two.
Yeah. Yeah.
Fishing adult, where does it come from?
The rules are, you want to change them. I was talking to somebody, because I love fishing for buffalo, it's so fun. And they're like, good luck, you ain't gonna find them out there. Fishing for red scapper, that's about it.
Russell jumped in the water and a big red thirty-three went offshore.
I know exactly where that's at.
Covered up with buffalo yesterday. He shot a few zone man curbs just to take home. We're on air, he just jumped in on fishing there, could have stung one of his spear.
Open for discussion? No, it's closed today. I'm really, you know, because like, at the rig, I've always caught a land. First thing, well, I didn't catch it, this little kid was catching it. I said, dude, that ain't no shark.
Not sharks, man.
Yeah, real shark. But, uh, yeah, he caught a, uh, shark, or. It's gonna be a land. There's like another fish that is right in below where they hang out. Even because they're certainly dead fish. And man, I just can't, I don't even remember what kind they were. These are really.
Can we interrupt this fish conversation? I know, it's good, it could go on forever.
Amanda, Amanda, you have the envelope for the executive session? How far did it go? How far did it go?
Four rounds.
Oh, did it go far?
Did you, that thing is, did you even realize? He thought that there was nothing. Didn't even realize it.
For a YouTube.
I think we should be on there. You're killing it.
Jason's pretty good, man. They're the guys, not they really.
That's powerful, that was enough. Two seventeen, that's good. Awesome. Is that what in the other one you think? Last year.
I still want to know, what's that weenie sausage? What? That weenie sausage she wants to market. Ain't no different than, 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 than a shrimp oil. Weenie sausage.
Oh, that egg and sausage.
Huh.
Well, that's better than that.
When I pull, I mean, that's, you know, when I do a jump boat. Get that big. Because for the flavor, you want to get a lot more flavor. I want to get a market.
I'll do it. I don't know, I can't stand that sausage, so I'll disagree with you, but it's okay.
No, I like it now. Like, I'd rather have like, I'll do, or something like that, but I would like to put weenie sausage.
Which one's your favorite, the weenie sausage?
Yeah, for, for that, yeah.
For the shark?
Yeah. We'll leave it, we'll leave it at that. That could be a problem.
The paperwork's in there, Amanda? The paperwork, alright, appreciate it. Barry?
Seven o'clock, call to order the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Ranses Pass. Here at six hundred West Cleveland Boulevard, Ranses Pass, Texas, June second, twenty fourteen, at seven P M. Everybody please stand for their vocation.
Lord, I'd like to give thanks for this beautiful day. Please bless the whole community as times come and go. Trials and errors happen all the time. Please help with your guidance as we discuss things for the cities, for the future of Ranses Pass. Also, guide our citizens and our community to watch over their health and prosperity of this community. Thank you, Lord, for every opportunity and just for, for when we know that when the times are really hard, we always have a place to turn to.
Amen. Okay.
Let's just do the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will bring us to item number three, considering that for the consent agenda. If all the following items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council, will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's sole request. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items A, B, C, and D.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second. Alonfer say aye?
Aye.
Aye. This will bring us to item number four, the city of Ranses Pass audit of the fiscal year of twenty twelve to twenty thirteen. Which will be A, a presentation of rent of Macquarie, E C. And then B will be considered napped of the finance. This now.
I don't think it's.
I don't think it's.
Okay, now, can you hear me? Ooh, yeah, you can hear me. The city's been through some significant changes over the past few years. And I want to say, first of all, that I really do feel like the city's going in the right direction. I hope that when you looked at this audit, that you see a leaner and more reader-friendly report than maybe you have had in the past. Uh, when I was engaged to perform this audit, I was tasked with removing some of the redundancy from the city's books. Uh, many funds had been established that, in my professional opinion, were not necessary and unwarranted. I, um, went through those funds along with the help of the staff and we pared down those considerably. I'm going to give you a little accounting lesson. I'll try to keep it brief and try not to bore you too much. Governments use fund accounting. And what that really means is, is a government, you, you are trying to be accountable to your citizens. Whereas a business uses, doesn't use fund accounting. Governments are accountable, using, they're emphasizing accountability where businesses are emphasizing profitability. And that's the difference between a government and a business. So for a government to be accountable, it's necessary for the government to report each of its functions in a separate fund or column, if you will, in the report. Governments are required to have a general fund. And then they're also required to have other funds as statute ordinance or law requires. Cities are also allowed to create funds as they see fit that's going to enhance the reporting of the city. If there's a need for a separate reporting, if there's a need for a separate fund, you have the discretion of creating another fund. What has happened over the past number of years is, uh, many funds were accounted or created. And these funds were created haphazardly and not in according, accordance with the rules for fund accounting. You may not be aware of it, but the city had over fifty funds. So after restructuring the city's books, you now have thirteen funds. And this was after a lot of work, a lot of consolidating, um, a lot of work by staff. You have an excellent, um, staff that was very helpful, but there was a ton of work to be done. So that got pared down and it, it got a little bit more manageable. Additionally, there were over twenty non-essential bank accounts. You had just bank accounts created for no specific purpose. And they had no, no or little activity and the balances in some of these accounts were, you know, ten dollars or less. There was, there was just a lot of fluff. There was a lot of extra stuff going on and it took up an immense amount of your staff's time. Those twenty superfluous accounts have been closed. And after, you know, they were determined that they, they were, they were not essential to the city's needs. As we stated, as I stated earlier, with all of these funds, with all of these fifty funds, there was lots of transfers back and forth from fund to fund to fund. And you, as a council, were unable, and I think the managers at the time and the staff, no one was really able to see really what was going on with your money. It was just being moved from fund to fund. Sometimes when money gets moved from fund to fund, that fund will recognize revenue. But it wasn't really revenue, it was just moving money from this, this pot to the next pot to the next pot. So that was part of, I think, the, the difficulty that the city was having in, in really managing and understanding where your money was. Excuse me. The audit that's before you is for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. And many months have passed since, uh, your year end. And you might consider the relevance of the content of this report just be a little bit outdated. However, I'm going to give you the highlights and the lowlights of, of your fiscal year, so you'll officially know where you are. After much work, I'm going to, I'm happy to deliver a clean, unqualified opinion. The structure of your audit report is, the, the first section is the financial section and pages nine through twenty. That's a section of the, the report that is a summary of your, the whole report. And it's written in layman's terms where you don't have to be CPA to actually understand it. So if you're going to really focus on any part of the report, I would recommend, I would direct you to pages nine through twenty. That's where all of the summaries happens. I want to state, state further that, you know, it's not uncommon for cities to operate their general fund in the red. I mean, it's, it's a fairly common occurrence. And, and the general fund will rely on transfers from the more profitable side of your business-like activities. And in the fiscal year ending twenty thirteen, you're, the general fund spent more than, than it received by nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, which is considerable. However, the city's water and sewer fund, which is a business-like activity, it operates at a profit of about five hundred thousand. When all things are considered, your net deficit to your fund balance was about four hundred thousand. I don't want you to be alarmed right now by this deficit of four hundred thousand, but it's factual. What you've done is you've dipped into your savings. You have a budget and you overspent your budget and you dipped into your savings. And that's, that's okay to do every once in a while, but if you continue to dip into your savings, you're going to run out of money. So what hopefully, what, what I've been able to do, I talk with my hands. What I've been able to do is, um, give you a report that your city manager can ma, help to manage. You guys can govern, your finance director can direct. Now you have the tools that you need to develop a budget that, that will not cause this large deficit in the future. And so we're up, we're already halfway through, over halfway through the, the next fiscal year. But you have an opportunity very soon to, to develop a new budget and you should know the, where the money is and where the money went. So, um, that's really about all I have. Oh, the other thing I wanted to point out is the city's cash on hand is sufficient. You're, like I said, I don't want to alarm you. You have plenty of cash on hand to play, pay your current bills. You have plenty of cash on hand to pay the bonds payables that are coming due. So there's, this is not a dire circumstance, it's just simply you've overspent what you have budgeted for and you, you borrowed money out of your savings, if you will. So, um, I think under, with the new city management and the new financial direction, I think, I'm, I'm optimistic about the, um, the state of the, uh, the city. So if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to try to answer those. I don't have all the answers with me, but I can certainly dig them up if I need to.
On this, uh, where does it show like a reserve funds?
Your reserve funds? Well, I don't know that you have reserve funds set aside. What you have is, if you, I'll take you over to the government-wide financial statement if you look on page. If you look on page twenty-two. Um, the first column is the governmental activities. That's the general fund and all of the special revenue funds, the capital projects funds. That's all your governmental type activities. And the next column is your enterprise funds, your business-like activities. That would be the water and sewer fund, the harbor fund, those things. It shows, the very first line shows the cash on hand of the governmental activities. And, and it shows all of your assets. So this is what you have. You have twenty-six million dollars of stuff. That stuff includes cash, receivables, property and equipment, infrastructure, those kinds of things. Then the next section shows what you owe. And you owe fifteen million. And the difference is about thirteen million. So the, right now, our city is to the good about thirteen million in the big picture. That didn't happen in one year, obviously. So that's, that's, if, if that's kind of the reserve, the net assets down here show what's, what's restricted for certain usages. And maybe that might answer your question a little bit better.
That's more kids, um, they think unrestricted is fund balance, unrestricted fund balance, that's, they, they've been, that was what they've indoctrinated to believe. Unrestricted fund balance equals fund balance.
Okay, the net asset section, um, the, there's, there are the restrictions. There are the reserve, there is the, the amounts that are reserved for certain, uh, specific things.
It's two point one, if you look at the bottom, that's unrestricted?
Yep.
Anything else?
And that's, that's, um, that's the important part, I think, for everybody to understand is, um, fund balance. When I first came, I remember Tom was saying, transfer from fund balance, transfer, we'll just get it from fund balance and transfer it from fund balance. It's not really a fund balance, because the balance is the overall checkbook. We're taking from one pot, then to another. And it's of the fifty bank accounts, which one didn't particularly pull.
So once that is done, it helps us with transparency operating. If there's any questions whatsoever. We will list this very loud and clear.
It really, it really does. And, you know, this isn't very timely. And, and that was the other point I wanted to make. In upcoming years, the timeline for you guys to expect an audit should be by the end of January. I would think that your year end is in September. You know, three to four months of, of before, for the audit to be ready. I would think that that would be, um, that would be a good target goal for, for a city to expect. And, uh, you know, that's, that's where I think it should be. We got started on this very late in the year, so glad that this is done. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brandon, Brandon Ross.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the audit for the year ending two thousand thirteen.
Alonfer say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
This brings us to number five, considering that on engineering services, the city of Ranses Pass Matlock Waterline Project.
Uh, Mayor, Eric, Eric Villalde is here. I wanted to point something out. Our agenda item is awarding engineering services. The item is actually engineering and more construction services, because we're actually awarding the contract to complete that Matlock Waterline. L N V is the engineer part, so I'll let Eric take it over.
Mayor Council, good evening. Eric Villarreal with L N V, uh, here to recommend the award of the construction contract for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve C D B G Waterline Project, which we refer to as the Matlock Waterline Project. Bids were received and read aloud on Thursday, May first, two thousand fourteen, for the Matlock Waterline Project. And, uh, three bids were received and the results should be in the bid tabulation and bid summary sheets included in your packet. The low responsive bidder on the project is E Tech Construction. They're officially out of San Antonio, Texas, but they do have, uh, a smaller office with crews based out of Kingsville. With a total base bid plus additive, yeah, additive alternate number one in the amount of two hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. We have reviewed the contractor's qualifications and their bid documents. And it's my recommendation that the city award the project to E Tech Construction in the amount stated. And I'm, uh, here to answer any questions about the bid process and the contract, if you have any questions.
Mayor Council, it's important to note that the, um, the matching plans for the Matlock are coming from the savings of the twenty-four bond proceeds where we replaced the banks and we re-capped them. The money that we saved is helping me the match, so it's not coming out of the water heater plant.
It's coming out of that bond.
It's coming out of that bond. But even with that, we still have, um, maybe our operations, like seven sixty-nine, twenty-seven, seven five, and some others around the main operations, like this.
I think it's also, uh, also want to note that when the grant was, when, when, when the city applied for the grant.
How old were you?
It, it, well, I called it the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve C D B G grant. And it was applied for back in two thousand ten, I believe. And it was applied for with, uh, with the intent that the city, uh, city staff and crews were going to do the construction. We obviously don't have that time. We've met with city staff. They don't have time to complete the project by the deadline, which is October thirty-first. So we made the recommendation to, uh, to bid the project with, you know, with materials and labor together. And we were able to do, to include, uh, most of the, the initial project and still be under budget. I think what we were not able to fit in was ten fire hydrants that were going to be replaced. And so, you know, with that, that alleviates some of the, some of the work that the city crews were going to do for you. Now that this contractor's going to do it turnkey.
What's the timeframe on that?
Uh, they've got to be done, closed out by October thirty-first. And as of right now, we don't see a problem with that. But, you know, obviously we want to get it awarded and get them going as soon as possible.
And that's the issue, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
When do you think that they could start?
Uh, as, as soon as y'all approve this, we will get them contract documents tomorrow. Give them about a week to get bonding and insurance in places. Normally, the contractors can't get bonding and insurance without, uh, without an award. The bonding company just won't issue a bond for, you know, their, their payment and performance bonds without having that action taken by, by council. So we'll, we'll speed that process up along. And soon as that, we have that back, we'll have a pre-construction meeting and get them going. Once, once we have that pre-construction meeting, by contract, they've got ten days to mobilize and then their contract starts.
But can't say they can't get any of that, for that time frame, you got a second contractor in mind?
Uh, we, we, I mean, we, we can always go to, to that, but we'd have to, we'd have to go through this process again.
He said there was ten fire hydrants that weren't going to be included?
That, that's correct. There, there was, in the initial bid, in the initial application, it was the Matlock Waterline and replacing all of those fire hydrants. In addition to that, there were twenty fire hydrants in a separate area of the city, which was, uh, you know, low to moderate, uh, income. Twenty of those that the city was going to buy the, well, the grant was going to buy the fire hydrants and the city staff was going to, uh, replace those fire hydrants. Well, because, because we're having the contractor purchase the, uh, the fire hydrants and install them. install them, uh, we didn't think that there would be enough to, to do all 20. So what, what we've got was the base bid, which was the Matlock Waterline. And then we did two additive alternates, uh, separating 10, uh, 10 fire hydrants apiece. And so we have enough under the budget to do the entire Matlock Waterline Project with, with the fire hydrants within that area and then 10 in that separate area. And, and the other 10 we just, we're, we're not able to do at this point.
This is one of the areas we suffered not having access to water pressure laws to find our end of last big fire. It's also goes a long way to helping our ISO rating.
Hey Eric, what was the total of this project? 286?
And if they wanted the additional 10, it's 3.5. So any plans for the additional 10?
We're going to sit and, um, we can, we can cover that for 1069 as well. There's a part of 1069 that is a historical area that the grant won't cover, so we've got it.
I make, I make a motion that we, uh, award the, uh, the, uh, Matlock Waterline Project to E-TEC Construction out of, uh, for $286,172.80.
Second the motion.
All affairs Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Please bring us item number six, consider an act on resolution by the city council of the city of Ranspasse, Texas, rescheduling the sale from June 6th, 2014 to June 16th, 2014 for obligations to be issued as one or more series and designated as City of Ranspasse, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Fledge Review Certificates of Obligation Series 2014. Resolve in matters in connection therewith.
Uh, Mayor Council, this is really pushing our tax, our, um, our bond sale by two weeks. Our audit, if you remember, was due two months ago because we didn't receive that. That's part of our rating. We have to have a standard reports, uh, meeting based on that audit. So we pushed, um, the tax, the bond sale by two weeks to allow staff time to read the audit and prepare for the rating of law. So, uh, as opposed to funding, a lot of parties didn't want to fund middle of July.
Do I hear a motion for number six?
Yeah, I make, I make a motion that we reschedule the bond payments for the certificate modification from June 2 to June 16, 2014.
I think that's the same. The bond sale.
The bond sale, excuse me.
Second the motion.
All affairs Aye.
Aye.
Please bring us item number seven, consider an act on approving the modification to the city of Ranspasse Camden Ordinance Part Two, Chapter 19.5, Parks and Recreation, Sections 19.5 through four, Section 19.5 through 19, including fee changes in addition to Section 19.5 through 20, General Penalty.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Council, while the act around, I'm hoping the, the, the ordinance on overnight camping and modified, the ordinance shows nothing that's really regulating camping around town at this time. Well, we found that, uh, some of our problematic, uh, individuals are remaining problematic with this ordinance. They found their way around it, uh, and that is by cheap permit, this cheap renewing the permit over and over again. There's no real regulation in place or defined regulation on what kind of structures it is to camp in. So now if you've been out and you will see a dilapidated structure that's been barely providing life out there across the country, you might see, uh, it is really bringing life on the area all around that area. And we receive numerous complaints, uh, unrelated complaints on some of the businesses that are first stacking up. So we revisit the ordinance, uh, went over it with code enforcement and staff and, uh, vetted it down to what we feel is probably the strictest way to go about regulating camping and keeping our area, uh, tourists worthy and worthy and attracting people in while at the same time keeping some of the nuisance, uh, trash, uh, criminals from using the lands as their safe haven for living and carrying out their crimes if they're involved. If there are any questions specifically, uh, as far as the ordinance or anything, or any idea up here?
Right now, we're allowing at the flats, you can't wait three days without a permit?
Correct. And that historically has been the only legislation that sits down is that overnight camping, unless it's three days with intermittent ceiling and very dangerous and efficient activity, it's just too much. We can't sit there and watch folks on. So, uh, we left that, the first ordinance around, uh, we left the three-day temporarys and we're finding that what some folks are doing is they're doing three days here, three days here, three days here, or they'll get the cheap fee, uh, permit and they'll continue to camp at the same location. Now you'll see that camper, if you're down in Good High Road, free to the down to the bridge on your left, that, that subject is a topic of many complaints. We've also cited him for littering, when the tide comes in, his trash and debris wash off into the water. He's actually unregulated. He's free to camp though without a permit technically. He comes in and pays for a permit, but he's technically, uh, not assured through by ordinance. This ordinance is going to inherently make camping unlawful completely unless by permit and it's, it's limiting how long you can have a permit. You can only get three of the cheap permits per year. Uh, if you're doing the, we, we did an extended permit for 90 days for our, our tourists that come from our Silverberg.
Right.
Uh, they like to spend some time out there, it's a more expensive, uh, permit and then they can extend that, uh, for another, uh, month, one time. And that's after the expression of over a business. For example, their stay normally goes longer than that day they can't sit there. Uh, we don't have problems with the Silverberg campers that come out, uh, they're very clean and, uh, in fact, there are eyes and ears at times as well. We have a constitution of suspicion and concerns if you put out there. We also define as far as the structures that can be used on camping, putting a structure, that structure has to, uh, be intended through its manufacturing process to use for camping, a recreational camping. The building you see across the mansion, you see looks like one of those temporary structures they put up there, like a job site.
Office, yeah.
Like an office building, that's not meant for camping now either and stuff like that. So that would be, uh, not approved by the building official or office that should put a permit. The other thing is, is, uh, one campsite, uh, has to have a, a permit. So you can't buy one permit and then invite all your buddies to erect a tent. So yeah, we got a permit here, probably this campsite. Each tent, each structure, each camping assembly has to have its own permit.
This is just one example of an email. This is only mail. Of the, the trash or camping supply. I get these every Monday.
Yeah, we had another one, did this in the name?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're, we're already bringing this to your attention.
I don't know if people realize, but on the RVs, they have to be inspected by the state, especially a trailer, any trailer, whatever, that's that. State protection inspection, a lot of people RVs tend to, didn't know.
And that would be part of the process that, as far as permitting would be included?
By any one section?
Yeah. I forgot, I just got mine. Things, sometimes get a little lax. Just like any trailer, it's, it's got, um, because it is on the.
Uh, and when I was looking into this more, a lot of cities, I sent an email out to the chiefs all across Texas to see what they do in their city. And I would say that 90% of them, they don't want to bring camping into our, it's either strictly forbidden or only allowed in specific locations or the specific type of waters. They don't like the idea of having it open up, kind of how we have here. That makes, like I said, they're without a restriction, they're just, they're just that way. But it's one of our main attractions, I feel. We've got a lot of good campuses in the city and we don't want to, want to run them off.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Eric.
Appreciate it. So do I hear approval?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the modifications to the camping ordinance, Part Two, Chapter 9.5 of the Parks and Rec, Section 19.5 through four and Section 19.5 through 19, including fee changes and additional general penalties. No.
I second.
All affairs Aye.
Aye.
Also, I could add those, those stickers that you used to put on the tongue, the trailer goes or be the driver's side by, by the, where it shows the weight of the trailer. I bring aside item number eight. This is going to Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I declare a public hearing open for the purposes of taking up the request of Archie and Yvonne Katara, uh, to be considered for a conditional use permit to put an RV on their property while they build their home. Property located 1320 West Highland. It's my understanding that Plant and Zonia has previously met on this and has approved your, I mean, has recommended your approval. Our Mr. and Ms. Katara present tonight. Would you come forward, please, and tell us what it is you want to do?
Okay, uh, first, thank y'all for considering this. Uh, we're in the process of, well, we're applying, going to apply to build a house on our property. We want to start by the end of the month. And we'd like to live in our RV while the house is being built, just plainly because of thievery. We've had light bulbs stolen, I mean, just anything that's not tied down, they'll, they'll take. It's pretty bad.
How, how long do you think it'll take you to build your home?
Uh, we told the builder that we want to be in it before Thanksgiving. We want time to move into it and have Thanksgiving in our new home.
Well, would a six-month conditional use permit be satisfactory?
Well, uh, hopefully that would be enough unless we get some bad weather. You know, this is start of hurricane season. It may run over a little bit. So, um, I would say eight months would be plenty.
Okay. Is there, is there, do you have electricity provided out there already?
Yes, we have electricity, a water well and a septic tank that we applied for, I guess it was in April, 1st of April and had it installed and inspected by the, um, county engineer.
Okay. Members of the council, have any questions? Is there anyone in, in the audience who is opposed to this request? If not, uh, thank you, Mr. Katara. I'll, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
So I'm going to tie them number B, considering that. Do I hear a motion in favor of?
Can I make a motion? We approve the request of Archie and Yvonne Katara for nine-month conditional use permit to put an RV on their property while they build their home. 1320 West Highland Avenue.
Give it, make it fewer nine, okay. How nine months, Sam?
That's what you said.
I said nine months. I did say nine months, yeah.
One more, uh, one more thing, uh, we're going to leave the RV on our property, but we'll disconnect it once the house is ready to move in.
Sure, sure.
And we get moved in. We have a slab for that purpose. So y'all can come out and check.
Okay, so I guess I make that eight months? I, I second the motion.
All affairs Aye.
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 Philip. Yes. Thank you.
So that takes care of number C. You also two known to that?
No.
No? So I bring up item C, consider an act on the proposed development agreement for Archie and Yvonne Katara. Property is described as Burton and Danforth Block 200, Lot 25, Point Acres, 1320 West Highland. Property is owned as R16, single-family home, dwelling district.
Um, they, as far as are, uh, in the area that we're going to be, uh, improving along Highland, they understand, uh, that they need to tie on to water and sewer within 18 months if they're becoming available. They talked to their plumber, their plumbers arranged the house so that things are done. As soon as they're done, he's going to cut off the separately well and he's going to tie on. Uh, he's also, uh, he also knows the SBA's packages in advance, today's dollars, and connect as soon as they become available. They are in agreement. Highland is an improved roadway. We don't have, uh, access issues, um, as we move some of the roadways. So I've talked to the Katara's at length. They are agreeable and ready to, right, check if the council approves your development.
Thank you.
Do you recommend approval?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion for approval by number C?
I make a motion that we approve the proposed development agreement between the city and the Kataras.
I second.
All affairs Aye.
Aye.
Then I will refer back to item D, back to Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing to take up the request of Triple M and L, LLC to rezonate from general business to heavy commercial. Property is located at, uh, Block 1, Track 1, Avenue A and Highway 35 Business District. Plant and Zonia has also acted on this matter and has recommended denial of the request. Is there a representative here tonight of Triple M and L?
Yes, sir.
How are y'all doing?
State your name, please.
Nick Turner.
Turner, okay.
Michael Brockenhofer.
Mike Thompson.
Okay. And give us your story.
Okay, well, I wasn't aware that they, uh, recommended us for non-approval.
They, they disapproved your request.
Okay.
It's a, planning permission is a recommendation, council is the ultimate approval.
Okay, awesome. Um, I want to make sure for one, that we have the right spot because there they were thinking it was the gas station.
It's the old gun, it's all the old gun construction property, I think, isn't it?
Yes, sir. The vacant lot next to McDonald's. And we have plans and drawings, uh, and, uh, the drainage, everything that they asked for us to get. Uh, we want to put in a car lot, not just a shack and some cleechy and asphalt. I mean, 100% concrete. Of course, y'all have a 20-foot easement along the whole corner, all the way down, which our irrigation from our landscaping would keep nice and green landscape. All of our landscaping is matted, bull rock, no mulch, alighted, Mueller Building, windstorm, everything 100% with the rock bottom accent, so it's not just a 10 building. Uh, I have plans if y'all'd like to see. I'm not that fancy as the TV there. Okay, awesome.
Mayor Council, the main, um, the main reason for the denial for, um, for planning permission is the concern about Wheeler and, um, commercial aim, um, unification corridors for the city. Right now, we don't have an empty ordinance, why would you tie them for this? So the proposal really is a complete rezoning or enter into some type of agreement with them that would, in essence, force them to make the unification, um, those landscaping areas, the fencing, the lighting, all of that. The other option is to make this a use that's allowed in the general business district with stipulations. That would require. That would require a planning commission action and then another city council action, which could theoretically happen in July. Right now, they're asking for a straight rezoning as opposed to a conditional because of their banking financing. Conditional doesn't fit into what they'd like to do, so they want a straight rezoning. That would leave us with a heavy commercial smack dab in the middle of our general business district. It is a raging commercial, however, a heavy commercial was used in much more intense, intense than our normal general business district. So, um, for that reason, staff is recommending denial of the heavy commercial. Now, if you want to send staff and the, um, the resident back to, we talked about some of the options that they have, and bring it back in July, I think we can come up with a possible win-win for everybody within, within the current zone that, that won't set us up for future dangers, stripping out those corridors as heavy commercials.
Um, why was it in, why was it in the office room? Whose recommendation was for heavy commercial?
There, because the open storage was required to the car and things. Um, the only time it's allowed in the zone is under heavy commercial.
So all the car lots?
Those are all rental lots.
But in, in the future, they will all have to be for heavy commercial?
Yes, yes, or, or we stipulate a use as an allowed use in general business category subject to a landscaping plan and those, those other things. Those kinds of things we can control if they're incorporated into the ordinance. Today, I have no mechanism. So if they're too strong, we can allow them.
So what is, what is your, uh, recommendation?
Well, today, the answer in front of me is a rezoning to heavy commercial. I felt the need to ask that would be good for me.
Somebody can hear you down here. Yeah, I was gonna say, well, the papers going on there.
Okay. Right now, the recommendation before you is a heavy commercial.
Okay, right now, the recommendation before you is heavy commercial. I don't think that's a good idea for Wheeler, commercial, and some of our more heavier-traveled beauti-, you know, beautiful corridors. However, if a car lot and those kinds of uses are something that council wants to allow in the general business, I would suggest you send us back. Allow us to modify the zoning ordinance in the general business to allow a car lot subject to certain stipulations. If you strip this out to heavy commercial, the uses that are allowed in the heavy commercial corridor are much heavier than it's in the general business. And so even though Wheeler is wide and the traffic, the speed there would lend itself to heavy commercial. That is also one of our main entrances into the city. And heavy commercial has things like outside storage, you have lumber yards and things like that. Don't know that that's something necessarily we want to see along that corridor. The only reason they wanted a straight rezoning is because the C, bankers and lenders hate a conditional use permit because he has to come back every year and ask for permission. If we have a more lenient council, he gets whatever he wants. If we have a more stringent council, they put in regulations that perhaps he wasn't intending to meet the year before. So it's a lot of uncertainty on the applicant's part, which is why they were asking for a straight rezoning. I think what they want to hear from you is a feeling that you're not going to necessarily turn away the car lot, but rather you're open to the idea of a rezoning or some allowed use there.
I think probably good if y'all get together, see if we can hash this out, see if we can make it work.
I, I would like to see it occupied and, I mean, I wasn't aware that car lot was heavy commercial, for one thing, I mean, where would you want to put it? In residential?
One of these we have to consider, though, is what staff is recommending for us, because if we do heavy commercial for them, then we have to do it for everyone that comes in and we're just, you know, we have no control of what's gonna come into that because of the zoning.
I understand that, but, I mean, if you don't want a car lot on the main drag.
Where would you want it? Where would you want it? And, and I agree, which is why the, the C is probably an allowed dot on the zoning chart in the general business with stipulations. Car lots, I mean, obviously, he doesn't want to landscape the whole area like Sonic with, you know, everything on there because then it blocks the view of the cars. However, they've got to meet some pretty stringent landscaping requirements in Rockport or Corpus, and they're willing to do that. So they could actually help us set a standard for future development along those corridors if we do it properly. If we do it properly. With a straight HC, it, it'll look like Everheart. It'll look like those, because the thing you have to think about is the traffic that's generated among those heavier commercial industries. A car lot's probably on the lower end of that heavy commercial scheme, but think about what Avenue A and Wheeler are meant to carry, all of the offshoot from that school as well during those heavily congested times of day. So that's what staff thinks about when we're thinking about zoning uses. Now, again, a car lot's on the he, on the lower end of that spectrum, so it could very well fit into the general business category. Just with some beautification, um, pieces that would help us, everybody's happy. They get what, they get what they want, and then we keep the city. Uh-huh, and we start setting the standard.
So you recommend for us just to table this?
Would you want to pass or table?
It would be my recommendation that you table this for them to have time to talk with Sylvia and get something for chat.
I make a motion that we just table.
I guess, are you guys?
We would really like to start construction and get this thing going. I mean, it's worth it, but we sit there, it's very lot, we've already got signed up, putting eighteen location park in there, hills park in there. We want to get in there, rip it up, force them in, build it, and this will be three, four months, five years, it'll be done.
What if, uh, our next meeting is June sixteenth, is that correct?
Um, we have a, uh, a planning commission meeting June sixteenth, but I'd have to advertise this, so I need fifteen days on. I can probably call a meeting June twenty-fifth and get it in front of the first council meeting in July. Which is July. Don't get me the line, second, something like that. Because the only action in front of you is approval or denial of an HC.
Well, let me ask you, ask this, is, is there anyone in the audience who is opposed to the application? Members of the council, have any further comments?
If not, then I declare the public hearing closed, and y'all can do what you want to say.
With, with direction, staff can call whatever special meeting you'd like to get that came. Well, just takes me fifteen days to advertise.
You can advertise tomorrow?
I can in the caller, it just says a paper of regional circulation.
Okay, so I would just say just table this and, and for staff and the, and the representatives from budget and lenders, get together and work on this so we can hash out a plan.
There you go. Second. All in first say aye.
I'm in. Will you get their contact information so we can put it down in the files?
All right, Miss Sylvia, you're up.
Just a few, just a few updates, they're important updates, though. The Shrimpery grounds, we had intended to complete Arch and Danforth prior to the Shrimpery. After much discussion with Paul today, we're, um, we're not going to complete those streets. We will zip them and make them more drivable, but full reconstruction of the street won't happen until after Shrimpery, just simply to make sure we address the drainage correctly. I'd hate for us to go in and do a street and then we're flooding the neighborhood because we didn't do the proper elevations. So, that, it's not that they won't be complete, but they will. Um, we did hire a librarian with unanimous support from the library board. Uh, her start date won't be until August the fifth, I believe. She's gonna slowly transition into the library system, assisting with budget and some other items. We are going to use our first community cleanup that's been incorporated into our trash contract on July the twelfth. We're gonna have roll-off situated across, uh, the city in three spots, and that's gonna coincide with police department's, um, trash take-back day. We are also working with Tech Dot on, um, getting eight wayfinding signs into, um, the city. And a wayfinding sign is similar to what you'll see in the city of Rockport, city of Fulton. It, they're directional signs. They point to the harbor, they point to, um, a couple of other, yeah. That's a wayfinding sign. What you'll, I'm sorry. This is what you'll see in the town of Fulton, so, um, items similar to that.
That's outside the city or inside the city?
Inside the city, uh, along, uh, eight pretty visible corridors, mostly along Goodeneye, Commercial, Wheeler, pointing to our convention, uh, pointing to our Civic Center, the harbor, all of our main attractions to the city. Staff's gonna start working on the budget, uh, now that we have a clean audit, we have a better starting point. Um, this year's budget, you're gonna see performance measures tied into it. The departments need to show us what they're doing with the money that we budget and allocate to them. Uh, the Parks Director is already spending her money quickly. She's ordered mowers and things, uh, so we should start seeing some beautification. We have started receiving our bids for the harbor. And they are taking up every bit of that one point five million we've allocated. But one point five million should leave us with a very clean and seated harbor for which to start, uh, marketing for future development. Work on the park continues. We need to sit with the engineers to really, that has a drainage issue, and it has more underground issues than the harbor could ever have. The harbor's mostly cleanup. So, um, work continues in that. And then we continue on the development front. Every day, every week is a new development challenge, so, just working through those. That's all I have. Along with the update you got.
You have movie night, how's?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. And also the July fourth event. Movie night in the harbor, the items, uh, the projector and things have been ordered. We plan to hold our first nonprofit lottery to see who's going to, um, be able to sell. And I have a list of movies you're each going to get in your box because we need help deciding on the movies. Staff can't decide if they want to watch Jaws or Finding Nemo, so I really need the, I really need the council's input. There are a lot better movies than Jaws, but.
Not in the harbor.
That's kind of funny. And the July fourth, uh, we got our final permits, uh, from the Coast Guard and everybody involved, uh, today. So Fourth of July celebration is on, on schedule and on target. Now we're finishing up with the surrounding events, and we'll also run a nonprofit lottery for that as well.
Just thinking it's gonna be a tournament if it leak.
July fourth weekend? As long as Roland doesn't have a tournament, because the fireworks are gonna be situated in the far softball field, the adult softball field.
I know Little League does. It's gonna be little girls, huh? No, it's a Parks, Little League tournament. I think they start on the twenty-first of June.
Okay, there's no other questions for the city manager. I move to my favorite, which is citizen comments. You have, uh, three minutes, please state your name and your pleasure.
Hi, my name's Nelson Spears, and, uh, I wanted to address the, the development agreement that we had kind of verbally agreed upon in the last city council meeting. Um, there are some stipulations that I would like to put into the contract. I see that wasn't on the agenda tonight, that's kind of weird. Anyway, uh, one of the, one of these stipulations is that the city has eighteen months from the time that the contract is notarized to complete the water line. And the reason I say just the water line, because the road really doesn't matter. And if we want to do this in a money-saving type way, we want to put the water line in first so we don't have to dig up the road later on to install the water line. So if you pay the road first, you're gonna have to cut across it. Um, another stipulation that I want is, uh, will not, my, myself, I will not start paying for the project until it's actually commenced. Um, I think it's pretty reasonable that, okay, when you start construction, I'll start paying for it. Another thing is, on subline four of the contract, uh, it says owner agrees to pay for estimated costs, uh, or actual costs, and then in parentheses, it could be, it could be more, it could be less or whatnot. Um, I am agreeing to pay for exactly what the estimated costs are, uh, the twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-something dollars, however much it is. Not a penny over it. And also, I wanted to talk to y'all tonight about, um, have y'all ever heard of EDAP from the state of Texas? Right. Um, it provides assistance for, uh, Texas, through the Texas Water and Development Board. And their publication stated that, upon doing my research, the publication stated that Odom, Portland, and Eagle Side, Eagle Side by the Bay, they have all received numerous amounts of money, you know, talking three, four, five million dollars in order to upgrade their water system, water, uh, their water system, their wastewater pipe, piping throughout the community, and also their wastewater, uh, treatment centers. And I don't see why Renz Pass couldn't receive it if we applied for it, or have we, have we even looked at it, or is there something that's stopping us from getting that?
Just trying to finish the grants we have open today. We have about six grants, all overdue, applied for back in like two thousand nine, two thousand ten. They're still open. Once we get a handle on those, um, that is a pot of money that is available.
Yeah, because, I mean, it could definitely help out the community in so many different ways, especially in my situ, my situation where we're at now. So, that's all I wanted to say. Um, I guess I'll get with Sylvia and try to hash out the, uh, the stipulations that I want put into the contract. And I will not sign it unless, unless we get to this point, because it got, there has to be some kind of agreement here.
Kind of end of the road.
Right, right. Um, and then after we get it all hashed out, then you won't hear from me no more.
Appreciate that.
Is there anybody else who'd like this? Have a comment or anything, want to speak up? Everybody pretty much happy then? In that case, I consider this closed. Now, bring us to, uh, item number eleven. We're gonna recess to open meeting or talk to the second session pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code for item number A, section five five one point oh seventy-one, consultation with our attorney, city attorney, legal matters, procurement procedures, with Combron Harbor, Volcare Repair. Time is seven fifty-five. The time is seven fifty-five.
Yeah.
Oh.
So we're in the other vote, I mean, like, two point area or the last state or?
Well.
Well, maybe, well, maybe.
Are you sure you just, just tell me like all their funny or something?
Two million articles of clothing guy.
Oh, oh, that's right, never mind. The next week, you're gonna, right?
Next weekend.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't you think Megan would be a great addition at the pool?
I think she should be a great addition.
Lifeguard or what?
A concession.
Oh, oh, cashier, that would be crazy.
Yes, 'cause it's crazy how they rotate and all that crazy stuff.
One have one, 'cause they truly go that, like.
And that's the ladies right there.
The only other one was a friendly, smiley face. Uh, not on yours, John, I don't know, nip it on yours.
I just sent somebody a ticket, so, you know, whatever. Yeah, I mean, she says, you know, I kinda did emails and texts, and everything, and all day, it's like, seriously, just don't.
Don't use your eyes. She probably is.
Love you. I think you said winner circle thing, but I saw it's here, that was.
Yeah, I, yeah, I saw that like just five minutes ago. Where's Rovon?
She's off this week, 'cause her son is graduating.
Hey.
People with younger eyes.
You said it, you're amazing, can I give you a hug?
That might be appropriate, tell me, if your eyes can see those little numbers, I can. Without, uh, without.
Well, let me see without my glasses.
Right, those are different layouts.
Oh.
This is just a test, this is only a test.
Wait, what's, is that the one that's?
Um, that one's the same, they're on both sides, I'm just trying to. Okay, the problem is, I ran out of ink, that was the last one I ran. So I'm trying to order ink and shipping this eight hundred dollars for an eighty-three dollar thing, that might be a website there. Otherwise I can fly to wherever these are being done.
So, what are you gonna do with those, just like hand them out, like in one of those things?
Yeah, just people on, people on the street, you know, just phone number.
I'm telling you, for like, Fourth of July, women's t-shirt things.
Yeah, you know, I think, uh, how, how do you think your mom would, would like that, that phone number being just like made up?
Wait, which number is it? Oh.
Oh, snap, and I think your number's on your cell phone too.
What? Let's go prank call Eric Flantr.
You know what, I'm gonna hop on my bad motorcycle and ride. Hello, young lady. Um, did you see the catastrophe that I mentioned on, uh, the website?
What did you do?
I updated, uh, my part of the page with their photos.
Broke the hole.
And I suck at it, so I just, don't look at it, it's hideous, I couldn't do anything better than that, but.
They're gonna be on the news tomorrow morning, so.
Did you, did you, um, did you commit some acts of terrorism, or?
Yeah, I mean, talking about homeless shelter, so they wanna block you out.
So you, they, they, they thought you lived at the homeless shelter, so there you do.
No, 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 they, I'm going, uh, Rachel Cole, Rachel.
Sweet. Threatening for clothes is good.
Wait, no, I wanna, oh, I'm gonna say that only good.
Oh, you were just talking about our stars.
Well, I hope they stop thinking that. I know, it's more like, yeah. Alec, can you guys look at, can you go up there? Through the part, um, she's looking, she's talking, um, he's always looking at someone, but I can't really really, but I feel a little bit. No, but, yeah, I think it's, you can have it. Yeah, and then he, like, they're not really, like, um, it might be, like, sometimes if I just, um, if I just, um, if I just, like, people are, like, like, I just. I think she wore her game, really. I highlight that. I saw one on YouTube, and it's, um, so. Yes, um, uh, he's reading them all the time, like. And it's so funny, 'cause he makes comments too, he'll be like, at the restaurant, he's like, is he? That's my job, that's what I'm doing. Crazy stuff with myself.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. We're out of session at eight thirteen. We're gonna reconvene with open meeting, start at eight fourteen. I bring this out of May, after consultation with the city attorney, legal matters, procurement procedures on Combron Harbor Bullkit Repair.
I make a motion that we had award Derek Construction, um, rep- uh, the Bullkit Repair under the non-competitive negotiation method, method under section four point one point one.
Second.
All the firsts, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the pass, now brings to the end of our meeting.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Third.
Aye.
Sixth, seventh.